We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's the Churchill County Commission. Today is October 5th, 2023. It's 8:15 a.m. We will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first public comment. Seeing none, we will move forward. Verification posting of the agenda.
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on September 29th between the hours of 8:00 and 11:00 at the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thanks Pam. Approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. Approval of the minutes of September 7th, 2023.
I move to approve the minutes of the meeting held on September 7th, 2023.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of September 7th, 2023. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous, thank you. We will now move to appointments. Our first appointment is consideration possible action, a zone change application filed by Forty Mile Desert LLC for property located at northeast of Hazen, assessor's parcel number 009-291-09, consisting of 640 acres in the RR20 zoning district whereby the applicant requests to change the zoning district from RR20 to industrial in the support of recent approval permit for rocket motor testing. Dean.
Good morning Commissioners and Chair. Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning for the record. Before I start, I'd just like to introduce our new employee Savannah Dukes. She's our new planning tech. She was hired a few weeks ago and just wanted you to be or meet her so that when you come visit her, you'll know, come visit us, you'll know who she is, so.
Is she at the front desk?
She is back by my desk. So the application you have before you is a rezone. Couple of months ago, the planning commission approved the, well, originally was Palace but is now Castellian. They're a rocket motor testing company. The folks who started it up were SpaceX employees that started their own company and now their intent is to develop rocket motors for missiles and similar types of rockets to support the defense industry. The purpose was to try a new approach to rapidly develop and test rockets and they chose Churchill County as a site that they would like to do that. They approached the Forty Mile Desert LLC, which I believe is Tim Tucker's or his estate's ownership group. They have been working with Corey Hunt.
Corey is here, I believe?
Yeah. With Tollis Development. And so they worked with them to, the rocket motor people worked with them to find this site and they've been working to get it developed. The difficulty with that site is that rocket motor testing requires an industrial zoning district and that site did not have it. And so in order for them to do the special use permit and start up the rocket motor testing facility, they need this property zoned industrial and so that's what we have today. There are, there's some complications especially relating to legal and physical access out to the property but there is, I guess I shouldn't so much say physical access because there is a road along the power line. But the legal access needs to be resolved and they've been working on that. And so this property is, like you said, 640 acres. That's a square mile and it's in the rocket motor testing site is within that facility. This is about four miles from the town of Hazen following the railroad tracks and the power line. So it's north and east and they are undertaking a number of things to make sure that the site is, the site mitigates its impacts and so the planning commission was happy with that. And so if you have any questions about this rezone for the property, I'd be happy to answer questions and if you have questions for Corey Hunt, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them too.
Any questions from board or staff?
Dean, who's going to maintain that road?
I'm sorry?
That road that's going to the plant, who's going to maintain it?
The rocket motor testing company will maintain it.
Because usually when I've been down and it's just, it's almost like driving through Sand Mountain sometimes.
Sections of it have been improved over the decades and are in pretty good shape and for the most part it's an okay road. It's the wet weather that will really cause trouble and so that's an issue that they will be working on and that includes the fact that roads tend to be depressed below the surrounding land and so when you get water trying to cross it, it tends to get trapped in the road. And so the trick is to get it off the road so that it doesn't turn to sledge.
Any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request for zoning map amendment by Forty Mile Desert LLC to change the zoning on portions of APN 009-291-09.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the request for a map, a zoning map amendment by the Forty Mile Desert LLC to change the zoning on portions of APN 009-291-09. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. We will move on to the next item. Consideration possible action and application for a tentative parcelling plan filed by Jessica Stranger, manager of Nevada Development LLC for property located on Desert Hills Loop, assessor's parcel number 008-176-82, consisting of 16.48 acres in the E1 zoning district whereby the applicant proposes to plan for the creation of seven residential lots.
Thank you, Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning. This application has a bit of an odd history. It started as part of the Sky Ridge development, which is Caleb Road and Sky Ridge Road and Heidi and you may be aware of the area. It was developed by a number of people, including Mick Casey and also Ken Gearhart, but they never finished three sections of it. The McCrearys bought one of those sections and brought that before you in the northeast area along Dillon Road and so that one's kind of underway. They also purchased this property, which is in the southeast corner of that larger development, to the west of this property. See if I can point to it. Is there a power button or anything? Is it working? No.
It's working on this one. You must have lost the software again.
Oh, alright, well anyway. So on the screen is the map of this project. The large property just off the map to the west was also part of the larger project. So these properties were developed, boy, it's close to 30 years now, when one acre lots were allowed with well and septic, but those laws have changed. These projects have been kept alive through development agreements. The property to the west was recently purchased by someone who intends to cancel that project. So originally, the McCrearys project that's on the screen had a road running through it and connecting to the west, but since that project no longer is going to go forward, that kind of affects how this project is. The McCrearys had the parcel maps for that original project approved in front of the board and it involved 14 or 16 lots, but through a combination of errors and problems within the energy, that map accidentally, those maps accidentally expired. So because of all the circumstances involved, the McCrearys decided to come forward with this parcelling plan, which does not include roads through the property and connecting to the west and instead it uses extensions of the existing cul-de-sacs to allow for these new lots that you see on the map. The fire marshal initially had problems with some of the previous layouts mainly if you had, if you kept the old road system. One of the initial layouts just had extensions without having a loop. So we've been working with the fire marshal and this is the configuration the fire marshal is satisfied with. Basically, the idea is to keep the homes close to the cul-de-sacs so that when firefighters arrive, they know which direction to go, which cul-de-sac to go to, so.
Sir, did you have something you wanted to add?
No. No, I think that's pretty good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for?
Yeah Dean, so in this here, if you put the, is there somewhere in there where it says that the house actually has to be close to the cul-de-sac?
Uh, yeah.
Can't you put the house anywhere you want to?
What you'll see on the map, although it's, you know, at a distance and at a small scale of image, it might be hard to see, but there's some dotted lines. So at each, so near each cul-de-sac are some dotted lines and the dotted lines are essentially building envelopes and so the buildings, while the lots may be much larger, the buildings need to be close. Oh, thank you. There you go. The buildings need to be close to the cul-de-sac and that will keep it obvious for the firefighters.
And that's in the plan? That's in the plan?
Yeah.
To do that?
Yeah.
And since we changed everything in this area that had to be like five acre lots, how are we allowing these to be two acre now since it expired? And this is a brand new?
Yeah. So the code has provision for infill situations so that if you're surrounded by, you know, that kind of development, you know, it kind of doesn't make sense to have a giant lot in the middle of it so it allows the development to be similar to what's surrounding. One acre may not be appropriate but, you know, down to two acre seems to be fine.
Where's the cul-de-sac?
So at the top left, there's the existing cul-de-sac. It'll be extended down with another small cul-de-sac just right next to it. You can see the dotted line and on the lower right, it's the same thing. You can see a cul-de-sac there with an extension of it.
And it's not going to extend to any other people's property besides those lots?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I guess the one thing I'll point out is a requirement, I think it's in the motion, is that one of the local farmers was concerned that these lots were going to extend across the TCID canal and there's the potential that those lot owners might think they have the right to block farmers from using that TCID canal road. And so at the meeting, the, excuse me, the developer agreed to put a fence along the canal easement so that it's more obvious that that canal easement is not under the exclusion, I guess you would say, of the individual lot owners.
Okay. What stops a lot owner from taking the fence down?
Out, working with other folks really.
What type of fence are they going to put up? Just barbed wire? Is that what it is?
What's it, a four-string barbed wire, Dan?
Okay.
Yeah.
So they could just?
And of course TCID maintains it and they, you know, don't want it to be encumbered, I guess, by fences and so they would be, have an interest in an ongoing maintenance situation to keep people from doing.
But they're okay with the fence with TCID?
As far as I know, yeah. Haven't got any.
Mr. McCreary, are they okay with the fence? You know how TCID is.
We didn't talk to TCID about it, but we definitely are and the farmer was amenable to it too.
Well, the problem's always TCID.
Yeah. TCID has always expressed concern when people fence things off and so they are, I know they are definitely, have an interest in keeping the road open.
And it would parallel the road. If we move the map up a little bit, the canal goes along the bottom of the one, two, three properties and we wouldn't be perpendiculating and crossing the easement off. We would just be paralleling it right inside along the ditch.
Good point, Dan, so.
To keep the, you know, the people off of their easement, basically.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it's just always TCID. Anytime you try to put something next to their stuff, you know, they're going to come after you.
Yeah, we've had these similar comments from them and so this seems like a good solution that would help them.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the tentative parcelling plan permit application for NevDev LLC to divide assessor parcel number 008-176-82 into seven lots, subject to the conditions as listed in the staff report and to add a condition to require a fence be placed at the north side of the TCID easement as stated in the agenda report.
Second it.
Okay, I had it wrong.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the tentative parcel map, parcel plan permit application for NevDev LLC to divide assessor's parcel number 008-176-82 into seven lots, subject to conditions as listed in the staff report and adding a condition to require a fence to be placed the north side of the TCID easement as stated in the agenda report. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you guys, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, consideration possible action, approval of an agreement between the Churchill County Building Department and West Coast Code Consultants, Inc. to provide building plan review services for large or complicated building projects. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Sanford with the District Attorney's Office for the record. So this is an agreement to allow our building department to essentially farm out large projects. For example, the, later on the agenda, we have a similar one for the district courthouse, but we also have large projects planned with the apartments building out on Coleman Road and hopefully even more as time progresses. Those very large projects are difficult for the building department to handle in-house. They're just not staffed for a huge rush like that project and then going back to low. And so West Coast Code Consultants has agreed to review those large plans for us. They are going to charge essentially 65% of the 65% that we charge for a building permit and that comes out to about 42% of the entire building permit fee would go to this plan review folks. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Joe? By board or staff? Joe, and Marie's going to make the determination which projects are too big for her office?
Yes. Every individual project that gets provided to us, she'll review, decide whether or not it's available to be done in-house and then if it's too large, we'll get a specific bid for that particular project, but it'll be under these terms.
Okay. Any other questions? Miles, you're pretty quiet today.
It's an easy agenda.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve an agreement between Churchill County and West Coast Code Consultants, Inc. to perform building plan review services.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve an agreement between Churchill County and West Coast Code Consultants, Inc. to perform building plan review services. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Very good. It's unanimous again. Is there any letters that you would like to pull out, Commissioners? Alright, we'll go, we'll go to new business. Consideration possible action nomination of Harold Pete Olson to the Carson Truckee Water Conservancy District. Who's speaking on that? Is that Joe?
I guess so, Jim seems to have disappeared. So we have a?
He had a meeting he had to attend for.
So the Carson Truckee Water Conservancy District is an important group here in Churchill County. Obviously, we care very much about our water. This includes Douglas Lyon, Story, Carson and Washoe as well. And so, as well as Churchill, obviously. And so there's 10 members on the board. We have the opportunity to appoint the Churchill County representative and obviously former Commissioner Harold Pete Olson is very familiar with the needs of the county as well as the importance of water for Churchill County and so we recommend that you appoint him to that board.
Yeah, Pete, Pete would be a good selection. Any questions for Joe? From board or staff? Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to nominate Harold Pete Olson for continued service as Churchill County's representative for the Carson Truckee Water Conservancy District.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate Harold Pete Olson for continued service as Churchill County's representative for the Carson Truckee Water Conservancy District. That is not the sub-conservancy district, that's the conservancy district. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous. We will move on, possible, consideration possible action, approval of a grant of easement between Churchill County Safety Clean Systems, Incorporated, Bravo Foxtrot Nevada Corp. and West Emulsions, Incorporated for a public road located at APN 007-071-81 and 007-071-82. Dean, are you dealing with that one?
I'm, I'll start for you, Mr. Commissioner. This is Joe Sanford again for the record. So you may recall some time ago, we had approved a special use permit for Idaho asphalt. As part of that agreement, there is a requirement for a 60-foot road easement between the Safety Clean property and the Bravo Foxtrot property on which Idaho asphalt will be operating. Currently, there's already a 30-foot public road easement and so there's a need for an additional 30 feet. This is a grant of easement from Safety Clean to the Bravo Foxtrot Group to get that additional 30 feet of public easement. This is a little more complicated than our normal version because they've included the maintenance of that road inside of this easement deed. So Bravo Foxtrot and Western Emulsions will be the people who are required to maintain and upkeep the road, which is good for Churchill County. And so we just ask that you approve this easement as it's been presented.
Any questions for Joe? Dean, are you familiar with this project too? So if, any questions for Joe or for Dean? Seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve and direct the chair to sign the grant of easement between Churchill County, Safety Clean Systems, Bravo Foxtrot Nevada Corp. and Western Emulsions, Inc.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the direction and direct the chair to sign a grant easement between Churchill County, Safety Clean Systems, Incorporated, Bravo Foxtrot Nevada Corp. and Western Emulsions, Incorporated. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous again. We'll move on to new business C. Approval to fund up to $40,000 in owner expenses related to make ready work on the Churchill County District Courthouse project.
Thank you, Chair. This is Joe Sanford with the District Attorney's Office again for the record. So the Churchill County District Courthouse is moving along very well. The architect has recently completed the 100% drawings and so they are at the point where they will be over at the building department for review. Again, this is a very large project and so the building department did not have the ability to handle this in-house and so they've contacted the West Coast Code Consultants to give us a bid to do that and they have done so for $8,750. There's additional work that was performed to prepare for construction, which was a geotechnical site study. That was $23,900. We could make these done through the architect, but they would charge us an additional fee and so to not have the architect get an additional fee, we would ask that we have up to $40,000 to perform the make-ready work. At this time, there's no expected additional make-ready work to be done other than the building plan review. But if there is any to be done, this would give us a slight amount of buffer that we could get some small projects done without having to delay construction or the bid process in any fashion to get that done. So $32,650 is required to be expended. The remaining $7,500 would be available for use for any unforeseen outcomes.
Any questions for Joe? Julie, did you want to, were you going to address this item in the agenda or not?
New business A, and I apologize, I was listening on the YouTube channel and I don't know what we're doing. Nothing at all, it's so perfect.
Thanks for showing me. Okay.
But may I, may I approach and clarify something I know to you?
Yeah, let us finish this one item here. Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to fund up to $40,000 in owner expenses related to make ready work on the Churchill County District Courthouse project.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to fund up to $40,000 in owner expenses related to make ready work on the Churchill County District Courthouse project. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous. Unanimous, thank you. Now you can come up and? For public record? Oh, okay. Well, we're supposed to recess now for Liquor Board. But not till nine o'clock. So we have a 15-minute break.
We can, we can finish the rest of this agenda if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay. All right, any, anybody want to pull anything out of the consent agenda items?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as listed. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, thank you. Consideration future agenda items. Seeing none, we'll go to commissioner and manager staff reports. I'll start. I attended the NACO meeting in Elko. It was extremely boring. But there was some good things that came out of it. And I'll be attending the healthcare for heroes tonight, which should be interesting. I think Shannon is being honored for her work. And then that's all I have. Justin?
So I attended the Stillwater Conservation District meeting, senior coalition and Parks and Rec this week, also got back from Indiana, was there for about five days and had a huge go-kart race with my kids, so.
Good.
Had a fun time.
What else?
I attended the retirement dinner for some Churchill County firefighters, and I know there's not a lot of people in the audience, but maybe there's some online, so I just wanted to congratulate Eric Lakey, Mike Lister, Mike Compey, and Tony Myers on their, between the four of them, 100-plus years of service to the Churchill County Fire Department.
Thank you. Sherry?
Comptroller's Office is just working on getting the audit ready, and I had emailed out the CTX tax distribution for July. If you have any questions on that, we are 12.62% higher for, than we were last July, but we're still lower than 22. Thank you.
Joe?
I don't have much to represent from the District Attorney's Office. Maybe Julie will, if she wants to do the county manager. I know that we submitted on the SNPLMA grants and did a presentation to those folks last week, and so that is proceeding along. Obviously, there's a large number of construction projects going on in the county and preparation for those, but everything is going along fairly well.
Thanks, Joe. Pam? You know, Julie just handed me this, and I was just reading it over. And the Jim Reagan Golf Tournament was organized about 20 years ago, and Pam has been working on that. Incredible amount of service that she has put into for several years for the tournament and for the tournament chair. Pam single-handedly organized the events, the advertising, collected donations, and sought out for volunteers. County commissions should really appreciate what she's been doing and the work that she's been putting in, and I want to thank Julie for reminding us of this. Thank you very much. So, okay. Thanks, Pam. A pitcher?
Yes.
We'll go for our final, well, our claims and payrolls. We'll go to our final public comment. If there's any public that wants to provide any comment, then we are adjourned.